All right, good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the King George County School Board Regular Meeting. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, please be seated. And thank you, Ms. Howard, and our SEALSTON students. Rhea Barnes and Colton Herbelsheimer, would you all like to share anything with us this evening?
How's SEALSTON?
You're both, oh.
Third grade.
Third grade, all right. How's school treating you so far this year? What was that again? Oh, we're glad to hear that.
Good job, guys.
Well, thank you, thank you both.
Thank you.
All right, at this time, we will move on with public comment. Looks like we have a comment this evening, Elizabeth McColick. Sorry for butchering your last name. So I ask that you state your name, your address, and in order to afford everyone an opportunity to speak, we ask that you limit your comment to three minutes.
Hello, my name is Elizabeth Mitchell, and I live at 6613 St. Paul's Road. I'm here tonight to address a few concerns. I love working in your school buildings, I love the education my two boys are getting, I love the sports that they have been able to be involved with. But this school year is nothing but normal again. On this topic about talk on pay raises for subs and teachers covering classes on their free blocks of time, I understanding needing more subs, I get it, I see it every day. But my main concern is not worrying about keeping the staff you have working their behinds off to keep your buildings running. I will do anything and everything my assistant principal or principal asks of me. I subbed for two weeks in fourth grade classroom and a second grade classroom. My own small groups were put on hold while I did this. It was fun, but did my pay change to do it? No, I barely make over what a sub with a bachelor's degree makes per day. I have my bachelor's degree. I could easily switch over to a teacher if I were to get the license, but I love working in the small group setting. Yes, it's a lot of prep and learning new things all the time, but it comes without constant testing of the students, the data of the meetings. I honestly love going to work. This is my third school district I have worked in, and I'm earning the least amount of money in it. If I was a single parent who needed insurance for my family, I would bring home less than $1,000 a month after everything was taken out. I honestly have no idea who could live that way. I see why so many pairs leave the job when life changes happen. If you're looking to raise your subpay, you need to look at raising the pay for staff members, too. If you're stuck at what a para who is not considered a sped para might do, I invite you all to work my schedule one day and learn how to really teach each group the material you are given. Sometimes you are given the material that morning and have to teach that group later in the day. To help with our sub shortage, I invite you all to come and sub at the school buildings. To the students at least elementary would love to see the people who are making all these rules really care about them. My other concern, I am talking about masks or no mask. I'm talking about how is it more important for me to make sure my small group students are three feet apart at all times and six feet away from me with their mask above their nose so that they don't have to quarantine? I'm talking about the added stress that each day brings to every staff member in that building. But yet, anyone who is vaccinated can come back the next day. Do we stop and think that maybe the reason the cases are still spreading is through these vaccinated people? Some students and staff members have been, have maybe been asked to not get the shot at this time for some reason or another, but since they cannot, they will always be penalized for what may happen. We are keeping way too many healthy students and staff members out of our school buildings and in this school year, it seems. Yes, these people are staying away from the building, but that is all they are doing. They're still going to their out-of-school sports, as it seems those guidelines are different than school guidelines. At some point, we as a King George community need to look at what is the best way to keep students who need the school building to learn in school. I personally know students thrive better in the building, not at home doing worksheets if they are in elementary, or stuff online if they are middle and high school with tired teachers who will get to their emails and questions on their off-school hours. The charts make it look beautiful, but either I'm lost on how to read them or they are not adding up on what I'm seeing every day working in the school building. At the end of the day, we need to look at the data and the students.
Thank you, Ms. Mitchell. Mr. Vance, do we have any comments online? No. Okay. All right, do we have any changes to the agenda this evening?
No changes, Madam Chair.
Right. So our consent agenda this evening, we have minutes from the August 9th, 2021 regular meeting, August 16th regular meeting, August 23rd regular meeting, September 7th special meeting, September 13th special meeting, and September 13th regular meeting. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries? All right, our action items for this evening. First, we have the 2021-2022 Advisory Committees. So in our packets, we have both the Special Education Advisory Committee and the Career and Technical Education Advisory Committee. Members lists, sorry. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion?
To do what? To approve the advisory committees?
To approve the advisory committees as presented at last meeting.
Any discussion?
Turn your mic on. Have the members been contacted, the potential members already?
I would assume so, if they're being presented for your approval.
Okay.
That's what you mean?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye? Motion carries. Kathy, is your mic on? It's hard to hear you sometimes. Let me move it in front of you a little bit. Okay. Our next actual item is policy GCE, the Part-Time and Substitute Professional Staff Employment. Do we have a motion?
So I want to make a motion after Dr. Benson reviews the new policy, gives us the, so for public.
Okay.
Happy to do so. My understanding is that there was a want to examine the minimum age requirement to be a substitute at the elementary and preschool levels, and it looks as though that has been amended for your consideration to 18 years of age at minimum for those levels, but it maintains 20 years of age to substitute at the secondary level.
I'd like to make a motion to approve as presented for policy GCE.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Moving on to our discussion items. So first this evening, we have the substitute pay rates. Dr. Benson?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Before you this evening is an agenda item, including a table. At your request, staff went back and did some comparison with surrounding school divisions to look at our daily rate for substitute pay in comparison to those surrounding divisions. They have developed a recommendation for you. You'll see in the, what, fifth column over, the recommended new rate, and in the final column, you'll see the per-day increase. Tough to estimate a total price tag for this. I do believe we would have the funds in terms of breakage this year to cover that recommended increase, and I would further earmark this as a agenda or a budget development topic that we could look at if we wanted to increase these rates even further to not only be competitive, but to perhaps transcend other localities locally. But happy to answer any questions you may have or take any direction as far as any edits you want to recommend.
All right, thank you, Dr. Benson. Ms. Pentzira, do you have any questions or comments?
No, so there is a increase for the para on here, correct? Which is what her speaker questioned. Just want to verify that.
Sorry. Yes, it looks like the final item on the list of para.
Is an increase of $10.
Correct.
Okay. No further questions.
Ms. Cutright.
So if I'm understanding this correctly, it's $75 a day, is that correct?
That is, that is the current rate. The, the recommended rate would move it to $85 a day.
$85 a day?
Correct.
Okay. If I might add, I think we need to have comparable salaries to some of our other businesses in King George County. For example, in other businesses like Sheetz or McDonald's, going pay is up to $15 a day.
A day or an hour?
$15 an hour, I meant to say. So it would be $120 a day, is what I meant to say.
So, Dr. Benson, these are based on a seven-and-a-half-hour day, correct?
Correct.
Which isn't that far off from an eight-hour day. I just wanted to let you, because you weren't in the meeting when we discussed that, the difference of that. I do believe we also discussed that as well, about pay not being comparable to Sheetz and so forth. I do believe it was a budgetary and that the staff was coming in and looking at, see how we compare to other jurisdictions? And that's how they came up with the numbers that they did. I'm only stating all that just because Ms. Cutright wasn't here and just trying to bring her up to speed.
Certainly.
So I think we need to move the base subpay to $100 and then move them, the other ones accordingly. That would be, you know, a $15 increase, which is, still you would, you're still going to be fighting competition for Sheetz and other localities. So that's, that's my recommendation.
So I guess there are two issues. Dr. Benson, are we setting the pay rate for the full budget year? Or are we looking at the budget we'll be developing for next year?
Well, I would think that any, any action you would take to adjust in the budget cycle this year, you would certainly want to maintain at least that for the next budget. And just to revisit, I, when Mr. Collins, you mentioned $100 a day, is that for the high school diploma?
That's for the high school diploma, and then the other ones are moved up accordingly.
I see, so.
Did the math.
As a percentage, and then increase the others accordingly? Okay, but I hope I answered your question, Ms. Hock, that this, this is, I assume this is a recommendation to be effective immediately, which would be this budget year. Wherever you settle, then, we would certainly want to carry the forward that it does not preclude the opportunity to revisit the rates even then to determine if you want to go even higher than that. But I certainly wouldn't expect you would retreat in terms of the hourly rates or daily rates.
Turn your mic on.
Put, put down.
I'm sorry, John. Is the requested amount sustainable in a budget going forward?
I believe it's doable, given what we have, what we estimate right now in terms of laps and breakage money for positions. Sustainable beyond that, this budget year, we would, of course, have to build it into a budget, but I believe it would be, you know, it would be baseline costs that we would have to then fund moving forward.
Okay.
So you're, so you're already funding substitutes. That's, of course, unknown how many, but you already have a budget line item, and the increase will be the, what you would have to pay. So there's plenty, well, there's money located in the budget to take care of that.
Dr. Benson, I also, I know a few pairs, and the ones I know do have a college education, and it seems that their fee is equivalent to a substitute with a high school diploma. Am I incorrect in that pairs usually have a, some type of college degree?
They can. I don't think that's true across the board, but it's not unusual for a para to have, you know, they may elect to fulfill a para position because they prefer that work more than they would a teacher position. You know, so we've had certainly folks in that situation. And we've also had pairs that have had two-year degrees, those, that type of thing.
So is there any way we can kind of raise the bar for those that do have a degree similar to the way we do for the substitutes? I do believe that.
You certainly wouldn't want to pay someone, you wouldn't want to pay a para, let's say at this rate you got in front of us, $86 for a day, and pay someone with an associate's or a master's, a bachelor's, $96 a day, and be paid for their degree.
That's what I'm saying. So I think that the pairs should be outlined the same as whether you have a high school diploma or equivalent associate's degree or a bachelor's, master's degree. So the steps as the same.
I would agree with that.
Okay. So just to make sure, interesting, so the, the, in this case, the recommended $85 a day for para in general, you would want the para with a high school diploma to be the, perhaps the $85 a day, but then if they have an associate's, to move that $5 up, and then the bachelor's to move that up.
Correct.
High school diploma to be $100 for a para that has a high school, and then moving that number for a bachelor's to the percentage of that.
I was just using the printed numbers, just to make sure I understood the concept. So the same strata that teachers had, we would be for pairs. And then wherever you all settle eventually with numbers, we would just transpose. Okay.
That would be, yeah, great. Ms. Usersky, if you're online, do you have a comment for us?
Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, I just, I wanted to clarify something for you all. The, the para that's listed on this piece of paper that you have in front of you, that is for a substitute para. That is not for our regular paras that work every day. That is for someone who comes in and serves as a substitute for one of our paras. We have a salary scale for our paras, and the hourly rate for the first step of a para is $12.14 an hour. So if you look at the substitute para rate, what we had recommended, it's $11.33 an hour. This sheet that you have in front of you is only dealing with our substitutes, not our, not our full-time employees. Does that make sense?
So are the pairs' pay compensation scaled?
Yes, yes.
Are they scaled by their degree?
No, well, they get, they get an extra stipend if they have a bachelor's degree. There is no requirement to have a degree. You actually either have to have an associate's degree or you have to have passed the para-pro assessment in order for us to hire you to be a para in our school division. There's no requirement to, to have a bachelor's degree, but we do offer a stipend if you have a bachelor's degree. And, and, and just a note, if you look at that high school diploma equivalent, right now, we are paying $75 a day for someone who has a high school diploma to come in and sub. If, if you want to start that at $100 a day, that is a $25 increase in our daily rate.
Yes, I can do the math, thank you.
Oh, I just, I just wanted you all to understand that.
A big chunk of the budget, this.
So no, let's just back up. It's, so you're, you're funding the $25.
Yeah.
Right. You're not funding the whole $100.
Correct. Correct. But, but if you look at that last column, the increase then would, if, if we're going to raise it to $100 a day, then the actual increase is $25, not just $10.
Right.
Yes, I, I got that.
Okay.
So it sounds like it would be a good idea, perhaps, to have these numbers revisited based on the conversation, and then, I guess, Dr. Benson, is it possible to, to get an estimate, a ballpark, what, what this would mean in an average year? Right, the, the delta in the budgetary cost?
I guess we could use, we could use year-to-date usage, I guess, per category, and use that as an estimator to multiply out perhaps an estimated cost difference for the rest of the year.
Just to give us, I mean, obviously not, it would be, you know, subject to change, but as an idea of what total dollar value we were talking about?
Sure, we could try to create that, that kind of methodology.
So this is, should be on the fast track. So is he going to bring forth numbers or is he going to come forth with a number for $100 less? What, what is the direction?
So I'm on board with the $100. I just think as a part of that, those final numbers, we should have a estimated total cumulative budget.
Got you.
So what I can do is use $100 a day for the high school diploma equivalent teacher. The difference then, as a percentage, then I'll simply apply to all of the other categories for the new amounts per day. And then we'll, we'll use our internal methodology to come up with an estimated difference cost-wise for your consideration. So both, in other words, we'll define the new, new, new numbers based on what Mr. Collins has proposed, that $100 for that first category. And again, we'll bring you back the estimate.
So is there a consensus for the $100?
So we're talking about $100 is the?
Minimum.
Minimum. So for, yeah.
Threshold, yeah. I think so.
Yeah, I think so. Ms. Hock?
Yes, yes, certainly. And I'll join in the consensus to take a look at what this presents in terms of our budget. So, and, and yes, I agree that we would want to begin immediately, providing that it, the budget can make it sustainable.
All right, any further discussion on that one?
So I guess, I don't know if I need to bring this up, but I guess we should be maybe cautious, only because I don't, you know, if we have a long-term, four-year degree or higher, and we increase that by 1.3%, which is what we're actually recommending, I don't know where that would stand in the regular scale of the teacher's pay. Just need to make sure that that would be comparable if they came in and, you know, if they became a full-time teacher, they wouldn't be, you know, like, step five or something. That, that would be my only concern.
All right. Okay, any further discussion? If not, next up is the bus salary scale.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In your board packet, I believe the, the board asked for a proposed scale that would begin at $20 an hour at step one, which you have that information before you, including an estimated total cost to implement such a change for the remainder of the school year. I did forward to you a second proposal that would move the step one to $18 an hour for the rest of this school year, with the idea then that I know that the board wants to engage in discussion about a possible step increase for all employees at mid-year's time. So again, just trying to be mindful, checkbook-wise, as far as what fight, what, what the capacity is to, to bring all of these to fruition. You know, it may be prudent at this time, and you see that an $18 step one would squarely put us very competitively with those other school divisions nearby. Again, then, with the idea that if you were to do a step increase for all employees to include bus drivers, that would be an additional bump in compensation come mid-year. And of course, for all employees, we will be entering the budget process for next year. You could examine all position groups to determine where you want to recommend compensation. So just another option for you, I know the bus, thinking of the bus drivers in, in and of themselves, the previous discussion, you have the information requested. Thinking of a, and we need to increase for bus drivers in their scale in the context of perhaps future increases for not only bus drivers, but other employee groups, I present to you that other option to make sure that you reserve. If you want to fulfill the others, you reserve enough funding to do so.
Reserve nothing for, to do what? Repeat that again?
That you, that, that, in other words, your, the costs associated with each of these, the subs, the, changing the bus driver scale immediately, you've got an estimate there. If you were, and I understand you want to look at October 14th, at the feasibility of a step increase for all employees, that, of course, will have a price tag. So I'm just trying to kind of phase things together so that you have options available to you to make it all fit within the fiscal capacity that we have in the current budget school, budget year. Certainly, I'm very happy the board is engaging in looking at our next budget and looking at compensation generally for all employee groups, so.
So if you, if you approved the $18 an hour for step one, if they got, if they, if they, if we revisited here shortly, the steps for all employees, and that would make them $20 an hour?
I don't know that it would get them to $20 necessarily an hour, but it certainly would give them an additional step increase on the 18 or the, any adjustment you make now, we'd have to calculate that out, but.
My, my views are that move it to the 18, get it to the 20 before the end of the year. You, we're paying contact tracers, or we'll be paying contact tracers $20 an hour, and I realize that's a temporary job. But again, bus drivers do need a CDL, and they are also some part-time. Bus drivers not full-time. Need to compensate them for that CDL.
So, Dr. Benson, the difference between the two, the $18 and the $20 is approximately two, like, almost $200,000 annually? $190?
$190, it looks like, in that, in that estimate. And of course, you could, you could then, if you looked at 19, if you wanted to do that, you would just simply look in the middle between the 410 and the 222, and that would give you an estimate of the cost to move to 19. But anyway, just wanted to frame an option for you, so that, you know, you can, knowing that you're wanting to look at multiple pieces, you can, you can make a decision about how it best fits with the fiscal, again, what we have available to us fiscally within this current budget year. But certainly that doesn't, you know, we would want to continue that in the next budget year and look at goals that you may have for that next budget.
I, I think I'd be a little more inclined to stick with the $20, because, correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Benson, if we go and, and we say that we're going to give everybody a step increase, and they're held at 18, I mean, the step increases are, I mean, if you look here, the step increases are sometimes only 20 cents different. So I, I think that they may be shy of that $20 threshold, which I think is a little bit more competitive. And I would not think it'd be fair that if we came back and said, okay, we're going to give everybody a step increase, but we're going to give the bus drivers a little bit more than a step increase. So I think if we give them a comparable or a more competitive salary now, and then look at the, the step increase, it may be freezing that step increase for them. If anything else, I think that would be more reasonable in my mind.
When you, when you give, when you give step increases, you shouldn't single out categories or freeze a category. I don't think that's good. I don't think that's good business. I understand your point, but I just don't think it's good business.
Well, I I think I would rather see freezing theirs than giving them shortchanging them.
I don't want.
Only a twenty cent. So I I mean, I'd definitely be on board with saying they get a a step two, but I I think that our threshold should be the twenty dollars start there.
Ms. Cutright, do you have any comments?
Yes, I think I'm in agreement. Starting with the twenty dollars, I know that driving a bus can be very challenging, especially with the shortages we have in the United States right now across the country. A lot of school divisions are giving incentives for new bus drivers, especially since they have a have to have a CDL license. I would even consider an incentive for new bus drivers because I know it's very difficult to get new bus drivers in this day and time, especially with COVID. I know a lot of drivers are concerned about health issues and driving buses. And not only that, the money as well. So I think any incentive we might give them would be beneficial at this time.
We used to have one. Do we still have that? I know we talked about that as well. We had any bus driver that well, that maybe not incentive for a new bus driver, but if you recommended a bus driver and we hired them, then the bus driver got a bonus of some sort, a couple hundred dollars, three hundred dollars. Yeah, a referral, that's the word I'm looking for. Yeah. So we still have the referral in place, but we don't have the new bus driver incentive in place, correct?
And we talked about that incentive last week.
Yeah, I thought.
We never came to a any conclusion or consensus on the amount and what were the stipulations behind it. Like, does that stay a year, two years, how much it is, and so forth and so on?
Correct.
Stafford County is offering a significant incentive. I'm not suggesting that we follow Stafford County, but I'm thinking that we need to think of some type of incentive to get bus drivers. One of my colleagues was telling me recently that King George County the other day, the children had to wait an hour to get a bus for the sports activity. I know it's real that we don't have enough bus drivers in this area. And and like I said, it's not just King George County, it's across the country.
What's what's Stafford? Just I don't I don't know. What what's their incentive?
I looked it up, three thousand dollars.
Dollars, yeah.
What's the what's the stipulation on that?
I think you have to go through the required CDL licensure, and you have to be on board several months before you actually get the three thousand dollars.
And you had to stay for a certain period of time?
I don't know about.
Rated?
I'm sure you do.
I'm sure you do. And that would be something we'd want to look at as well.
If you're raising the pay to the the minimum of twenty, that would put you already ahead of those other counties that we speak of. But I still, from last meeting, I still agree with a bonus, but I don't know how much and what's the stipulations.
Well, that's something that we could decide. And my suggestion would be if we're going to suggest an incentive, we need to give the bus drivers a criteria. For example, you might want them to stay two years as a bus driver.
Most bonuses are paid out over time. You get a certain, the first requirement, they get a certain amount of money, and then first year, they get the another mountain, and the end of the requirement, they get the remaining funds.
So let's also not forget we need to prioritize because we only have so much money. You know, so I mean, I agree that I think it's a great idea to give them an incentive, but we also talked about other incentives as well, new teachers and and all of that. So maybe we kind of put that all together as level, whatever that.
As budget develops.
Yes, as the budget develops, yeah.
That would be my suggestion. I I do think that the twenty dollars minimum an hour is is a good first step for us. And then perhaps to look at the incentive as part of our budget development, which could either impact this year immediately or going forward.
Could we bring estimated costs? So you have a bigger picture right in front of you of the twenty dollars being the the adjustment there to the bus driver schedule, the substitute issue you've talked about tonight, bring that estimated cost back to you, along with the estimate for the mid year step for all employees. That way, you kind of have you have the price tag for all of these things. And at that time, we can also bring you an estimate in terms of breakage or funds that may be available to help action actionalize.
Yes.
Your ideas.
Does that include the other incentives, such as the digital marketing and all the other type of?
I believe so. I know they're working on those requests you had last meeting to bring to you October fourteenth.
So, Dr. Benson, do you think that all I know you're working on that for the the midterm step increases, do you think you could have all of that by our meeting on the fourteenth? So the numbers, we kind of have the bus driver numbers, but the the sub rates that we mentioned a minute ago, so that and the bus salary and the and the step increases. So we had the whole picture together?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
That's exactly what I'm suggesting, to bring you each of those estimated costs so you can see.
We have the whole picture.
An estimated fund balance available so that you can you can make a decision.
Right, okay. So and then I I know last meeting, I know you weren't here, Dr. Benson, but there was discussion about like, you know, the amount of money, and I don't know if that's our term breakage that gets returned at the ends of the at the end of the year. I know last year's budget isn't necessarily related to this year's, but just for informational purposes, I guess, to wrap our heads around it. Can you provide us with information on how the, I guess, that breakage or whatever was at the end of last year? Or historically, so we have an understanding of how we do usually fall out with that?
Yeah, I would be hesitant to bring you a historical, you know, number because certainly last year was was a unique year in terms of fund balance return. Certainly, if that figure is available, and I'll ask the county office, typically, that figure is not available until they finish their their annual audit, which is a little later into into the fall. But I'm happy to ask and see if they have any kind of preliminary number or anything I could share with you all in terms of funds returned last last year.
I can tell you from all the years past what the what the return.
I guess that was kind of what I was getting at. It would be, it seems like that would be an interesting to see. And I know that there's a lot of work that goes into digging into why that money wasn't spent, but um, I guess, to see if there were trends that then could inform, you know, decisions like this, right, about how we typically operate?
Well, yes, although you do do understand that you you certainly have authority to to apply current year funding. You would not have the flexibility without going back to the board supervisors to access any funds return.
Understood.
Okay.
Yeah, I just meant if there's a pattern, if we typically, you know, if we're returning, I don't know what the order of magnitude of it is, right? It was just to inform future budgetary decisions. So maybe not even necessarily for you know, this conversation on the fourteenth, but just to inform future budget discussions. Is that something we could do?
Every year, at least for the past eight years, there's been a return. That money comes from all different sources, breakage and so forth and so on. It was it was a really large sum when I first got on, and what we did was we created projects that were so we didn't have to go to to the county for these CIP items. So we would take care of these, pave in the parking lot, and we'd had a list and it was already ready to go. So we could take care of those projects. And that that has kind of waned off in the last couple of years. So there there is money available. I I follow it pretty close.
So I guess, Dr. Benson, what's your, I guess, take on that or how it's been handled or to Mr. Collins's point about how that how that excess funding has been addressed or used in the past?
We have. In fact, when I first arrived, I remember clearly trying to put together kind of a bundled package of of concrete improvements, you know, stepways, walkways, landings throughout the division. But and to try to combine these to create an aggregate amount that that met the fifty thousand dollar minimum threshold for a CIP item. But was advised by the board supervisors that I couldn't really create that precedent that others couldn't follow kind of thing, that I needed to look inward at perhaps end of year fund balance to address some of these mini CIP type, you know, the the road repaving or pothole improvement, landings that needed to be resurfaced, that were crumbling, walkways or stairwells, external that needed to be addressed, curbing. Those types of things. And so we have looked towards end of year balance to try to knock off, you know, needs that we have division wide so that we're not having to go back to the board supervisor and ask for additional money to do those things. We've simply looked inward at our own existing budget to address some of these typically facility needs or even equipment. It could be, you know, a new snowplow that we needed. You know, when we had fund balance, we addressed that to make sure that was in place for the next year, as an example.
In the past, it's been one time expenditures. It's not been a.
Right, a longer term investment, I guess, yeah.
Always, always one time. I mean, Mr. Collins is absolutely correct. We would not build in a recurring expense to a non recurring fund source.
Well, the other piece of that is that the the annual, the the breakage is truly a a number that cannot be predicted to a great extent because it depends on a variety of factors. It might be interesting to look at the the number over the past few years. But I I certainly agree with with Mr. Collins that in the past, it had been very large and then dropped down a good bit, if it's my memory. And that it it waivers depending on the circumstances of the year. So I I think it is a difficult kind of number to predict.
It it is a difficult number, but it but it is consistent because what happens, and we talk about some of these things, it's not poor budgeting, it's what's it's good management.
And staff turnover and.
Staff turnover is big. I mean, you know, you a teacher leaves, that retires at eighty, ninety thousand, whatever it is, and a new one comes on at forty five, there's that breakage, you you budgeted for the eighty thousand.
Right.
So that's, I mean, it's not like it's a poor work, it's just the way it works out.
Right, exactly.
And the board supervisors gives you the money to spend for the schools, and they I've had several of them tell me personally, we give you the money to spend, and we don't want the money back.
Right, right. We're doing our best.
Might be different after November, I don't know.
Okay. So I guess back to the immediate subject at hand. So it sounds like we want to see numbers on the fourteenth for the changes that we've discussed. For the three different areas, right, the substitute pay rate, the bus salary, and then the 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 potential for a step increase for staff, and then the total numbers for what that means at our next meeting. All right, okay. All right, any further discussion then on the the bus salary scale? Nope. Okay. Next, we have the Technology Advisory Committee, which I believe was presented in our packet for review. Does anyone have any discussion or questions on the proposed committee?
I am not seeing it in the.
Yeah, I'm looking for it.
Board docs packet.
Thought I saw it.
Their page number on it?
Was that was that in the updated?
Oh, okay, that's your list.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right, any discussion? Negative. Okay. So I suppose that will come back to us at the next meeting for approval, Dr. Benson. Okay. All right, our policy manual updates this evening. So first, we have policy AD, educational philosophy. Any discussion? Stop me if you have comments on one. Policy EBCB, safety drills. Policy EGAA, reproduction and use of copyrighted materials.
I do have a comment on that one.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Collins.
We need to copyright what we use as King George seal and any other production material so that it can be only used it for the school's benefit.
Do we know it's being used elsewhere?
So the board supervisors did theirs. And so, yes, I I've seen it other places. It's not that you can't give permission to use it, it's that you want to be able to have control who uses it or what company. You don't want a some company that the school board wouldn't agree with, you know, you know, I'm not going hey, we have a company like that. I'm just saying, we need to be able to control copyrighted material. Seal. Seal and other other things.
Talking about means to protect the seal or any other logo as a trademark?
Yes.
Okay, I can investigate costs associated with that or the process.
Yeah, I brought brought it up six or eight months ago.
Well, if the board of supervisors has already copyrighted.
Copyrighted, not King George.
Not the schools.
They have the county seal, they have the other county the three hundredth anniversary thing, they have several things on trademark copyrighted. It's not a very extensive process. It should be done.
I think it's a good idea. Can't hurt.
Certainly can't hurt.
Would agree. Okay.
That's it.
All right. Next, policy GAB slash IIBEA, technology use guidelines. Policy GB equal opportunity, sorry, equal employment opportunity slash nondiscrimination. Policy GEA slash JOH, acceptance of electronic signatures and records. Policy IAG, teaching about drugs, alcohol, and tobacco. Policy IHA, grouping for instruction. Policy JFCA, teacher removal of student from class. Any remaining comments? If not, I assume those will be brought back for us for action at our next meeting. All right, moving on to our information items. Do we have any committee reports this evening? Ms. Pansiera?
No.
All right. Ms. Cutright, I assume the answer is no?
No.
Ms. Hawk?
Not at this time.
Mr. Collins?
I have the governor's school packet Commonwealth passed down for anyone to view. Dr. Benson brought that for us.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, I I do not have any committee reports myself. So now for our superintendent's report. Dr. Benson, do you have anything for us this evening?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just personal thank you for the board's support. I was recently pretty ill, thus my absence over the last couple of meetings, but I'm happy to be back. I also appreciate the the support for my father right now as he's looking or we're hoping he's gonna recover from a recent surgery. So I appreciate everybody's patience and and support and kind of keeping things going for me in my relative short term absence there. I do want to officially welcome and thank in advance for her service, Dr. Cutright. Appreciate you stepping up and look forward to working with you. So that is it. I'll leave it at that, Madam Chair.
All right, thank you, Dr. Benson. All right, and now for our board comment for the evening, Ms. Pansiera.
Actually, I had a question for Dr. Benson. I know you've been out, and it's been hard to get a hold of you, so I just thought I would wait. But I I'm under the impression that in order to go to either some or all of our activities after school or like the football game and volleyball games and stuff, we have to purchase tickets online, and they don't accept any cash at the at the game itself, and it it's an added expense as well. So I was just wondering, is is that something that's going to be long term? Is there somehow that we can go back to? Is there somehow that we can go back to being able to pay at the gate so that we can just kind of support our schools a little bit more and our, our athletics?
I don't know. I can speak with Mr. Fisher and I can get you a response to the board in writing as far as what the, what prompted, I guess, the apparent shift and whether it's a permanent thing or any cost impact, that kind of thing.
So I think that what I had heard is that they didn't want to accept cash at the window, but yet we do accept cash at the concessions. So I just think that it's really impeding a lot of people from actually going out and participating and supporting our, our athletics, and I think we should try to lift that as soon as possible.
All right, anything else, Ms. Pansiera?
That's it, thank you.
Okay. Dr. Cutright?
I just wanted to say that I look forward to working with everyone on the board and also my constituents at James Madison District. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Dr. Cutright. Ms. Hawk?
Um, I, I do want to say a special welcome and thank you to Dr. Cutright because it's, it's not easy to come into something that you already know is going to be difficult. Sometimes folks step up for community positions and don't really know what they're getting into, but you know, I, I think this lady has a real understanding of what she's coming into and she still stepped up. So we do say thank you, welcome. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Hawk. Mr. Collins?
Thank you, Dr. Cutright, for stepping up and being a part of the board. Now we have a full five-member board. Moving forward with what we spoke this evening in regards to substitutes, bus drivers, other employees, we're trying to make a way to keep you and please you and, and keep a great environment for our students. There's no doubt even before the pandemic that the staff members all stepped up and King George has always been out there's number one place to educate your children. With pandemic, that didn't stop, but we know that you're growing weary and tired and we're trying to make things a little bit better so you can do your work. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. And so I would also like to extend a welcome to Dr. Cutright. Yes, I agree with Ms. Hawk. This is obviously not only a regular challenges of a school board, but a particularly challenging year to walk into it. So thank you for your, your gusto and we look forward to working with you here. And I would like to just voice my support for the discussions that we're having about increasing pay and all of these sorts of things for subs and bus drivers and our staff in general. I'm optimistic about that. I know there are budgetary implications, but I definitely think these are changes that are good for, good for all, so I'm very optimistic about that. Um, I, Dr. Benson, I had one thing, I think I'd, I was wondering if we had an update on the EPA grant from the Friends of the Rapper Handic with Mr. Huntsinger. I know you've had a lot going on, but if there had been any momentum, getting any grant applications put out for getting some of their programs in our schools. So if we could get an update on that, that would be appreciated. And I think that concludes my comments for the evening.
Madam Chair, can I make one more comment, please? I'm sorry.
Certainly.
I had it written down, but I didn't mention it. So Dr. Benson presented the other night through the board of supervisors for the CIP for the schools and I listened to all of them. There's a lot of needs in King George, there's a lot of wants in King George, and there's no way they can fund all those things. But they were very, they, they asked a lot of questions about the preschool building. So they know that there's a need to be out of that building and there's, you know, it's, it's put, it's put on there as, was it, wasn't it urgent? And by the planning commission, so they see the need also. They did have a lot of discussion on their courthouse building, when that other one gets built, what they're going to do with this one, and talked about parking lot out there, they talked about all kinds of stuff. But as far as the school's concerned, they, they asked questions about the, the old middle school, how that could be used maybe for a preschool or could it be raised and put a preschool and so forth and so on. The, the placeholder number was sixteen million, five hundred thousand dollars. I imagine if you, if they, I would hope that the board starts considering those choices to recommend to the board of supervisors which way you want to go. I don't think that you'll get a new building. I think that they know there's a need for that middle school building and the price tag to rehab it was like a while back, like seven million dollars. So, but it could be useful for not just our needs, but other needs in the county too. So I just wanted to make you aware and I encourage you all, if you didn't listen to the CIP, they'll have another one, it's either tonight or tomorrow night, but you can catch them online. Thank you. Thank you for indulging me again.
Certainly, thank you, Mr. Collins. All right, do we have a motion to go into closed session?
Pursuant to State Code Section 2.2 dash 3711 point A point one, for the purpose of discussion, consideration of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, substitutes and resignations of employees of the school board, a move we go into closed meeting.
Second.
I'm sorry, we have an amendment, amended one. So it is consideration of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, substitutes, resignations and termination of employees of the school board.
Okay, what's, what's been added?
Termination.
Okay.
Employees.
Second.
Okay. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, Chair votes, Chair votes aye. We're now in closed session.